You ready? All right, let's start this regular meeting of September ninth.
United States of America and the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Yeah, roll call please.
Mayor Lauplin.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stolman.
Here.
Do you need a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second, anyone?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda, first of all, consists of approving the minutes of September sixth, September sixth council meeting. A special permit for the City High Cross Country Run on October first. A special event permit for the Fall Fest on October eighth. The claims of September. And the June monthly financial report, motion, anyone?
Promote.
Thank you.
Any comments, anyone?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I don't mean to be difficult, but it doesn't seem to make any sense that we have these special event permit applications. They're put in here and they're blank. I mean, what do we, what do we approve it? It's a blank permit.
I just looked.
Is that the second one or the first?
Mine's not.
Yeah, it's got all our initials.
There's initials in each of the boxes. Some of them.
Mine's building. What, you guys? We got the City High Cross Country Run and then it got. Yeah, mine's a little bit. It starts out blank, but then it fills itself in. That was second. Okay. Um. You want a comment? Anything else, anyone? Okay, let's consent agenda, please.
Do we have a sign out at the school or something? School light batteries? On the consent agenda, agenda?
Mobile light batteries.
It's mobile, mobile tracks. With light batteries.
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, that's the speed sign?
No.
One on, oh, it's in the street, on West Main. So they purchased those several years ago and the batteries were out, so they replaced the batteries.
I've just never seen it, but I don't go through.
Don't go that way. Alright, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Stolman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Alright, for presentations tonight, we have Kelly Rosenek representing the Daughters of the American Revolution. Revolution. Um, go ahead with Laura's floor.
Hi. My name is Kelly Rosenek. My address is twelve oh one State Street in Cedar Bluff, Iowa. We live in the old general store. I grew up in West Branch and though we are not in the West Branch School District, we open enrolled our daughter to Hoover Elementary, just so you know my connections to the community. I'm here representing the Daughters of the American Revolution. The Daughters of the American Revolution, if you're not aware, is a national society of women who have traced their descendant, their lineage back to someone who has served in the American Revolutionary War through birth and death records that have been confirmed by a separate party. The purpose of this organization is to promote patriotism, American history awareness, as well as endeavors of citizenship and literacy. And basically, the state of Iowa has as many chapters of the Daughters of the American Revolution as there are counties in the state. I'm part of the Tipton chapter, which is called the Stars and Stripes chapter. And as part of our endeavor to promote education around American history, we seek a proclamation from the city of West Branch to acknowledge that it is Constitution Week. Constitution Week is simply acknowledging that the Constitution exists and it is the backbone of our country. So we are hoping that through this acknowledgement, it will promote awareness through our citizens who will then maybe read it, have more understanding of it, and therefore promotes the education of our American history. And I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that as a government entity or government body, that you will support this as you have your own code to follow. And being the birthplace of one of our American presidents, it seems appropriate to have this city acknowledge that it is the two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of our Constitution. Thank you.
Want us at some point do a proclamation, which would be too late for this year, but.
Yes, proclamation is, I believe, provided in draft. And it would, I asked that, um, the proclamation, that may be just an information sheet about Constitution Week. There is also a proclamation that was provided in draft form that hopefully will be signed by you, acknowledging that it's Constitution Week once it's provided to you. Again, we're a nonprofit, non-political organization. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm all for this. I foresee problems down the line from certain residents if we were to do this proclamation, but it's okay.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, me too.
What's the problem?
Well, somebody will come up with.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Um, resolution twenty-two eighty-four, hiring Lucas Moore as a police officer for the city of West Branch and setting the hourly wage for a position, for the position until the completion of the law enforcement academy, motion, please.
Promote. Click.
Good. So we approved the contract with this also, correct?
That'll be a final one you all approve, once we get the, the actual numbers from everything. So you're approving the hire and then the, um, the pay at twenty-three, whatever.
Hour.
Yeah. And then, no, once we get the final bill from ILEA and any other charges we may have. Um, but yes, you're approving like that exhibit A, which is the draft. So yes, our officer needs to sign the draft, but there will be a final.
Okay.
I would imagine there's a law that says we have to do a minimum monthly payment of three hundred dollars. We can't just demand our money right now.
You're talking about when is, if we have to pay it back?
Yeah.
I think it was just trying to, that contract's kind of a form that the IL, ILEA uses. I've seen other cities have less than that per month, so I think that's kind of, uh, and unfor, usually what's happening these days is the, if they go to a different agency, the agency just paid a lot for them, but, so.
But. Or?
I'm just here to answer any questions, so.
That's what I thought.
Uh, the gentleman that has been proposed in front of you, his name's Lucas Moore, he's from the Iowa City area. Uh, so he's, he is somewhat local for us. He has now met all of his requirements for us, so here we are tonight.
Hey, I've met him, so I think he's a good kid, good guy.
I guess for the plan moving forward, we wanted to at least separate the hiring from the swearing in, in case there was any questions. Uh, so the intent would be if approved by council, to have him back, uh, to be sworn in on the third of October and start day of October four.
And I mean somewhere that there was gonna be a six-month review or something.
That, that would have been in his employment offer.
What?
In his employment offer.
Okay, well, you're gonna have to extend that because he's not even through the academy in six months.
Right.
Of employment.
Yeah, we'll have to extend it.
Good.
And will he, will he reside within the eight mile? What?
Well, he's, uh, he is subject to any restrictions we have at this point, so uh, within six months, he will have to establish residency within our eight mile.
Thought it was pretty close now, we didn't.
He, he's outside of it right now.
He's outside. He said he would make that happen.
Okay.
They've been.
It was.
Yeah.
Uh, any other comments? Lucas Moore hiring? So none, let's go ahead and vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Stolman.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Alright, resolution twenty-two dash eighty-five, approving an amendment with private redevelopment agreement with BBCO LLC here in Chill. Um, motion, please.
Promote.
Um. This has to do with phasing tighter schedule to satisfy funding.
His lender, yeah.
His lender.
Yeah, so he's lacking his financing, so the couple of changes they wanted to make, there isn't anything different than we really had in the first one, especially the part about the tax credits, that's just a clarification that, how that works, and my guess is they'll figure out tax credits this month, whether he was given one, two, or, so. It may speed up the process.
While we're talking about him, where, have we, does he purchase, I mean, are we, have we signed the deed over to him yet?
Nope.
Not done yet.
He's gonna get, he's gonna get through the zoning stuff. I believe he may have already closed on the tenant property. Um, I know he's got, the other one's under contract also, and, uh, with different clothing, I think Clark might be the first to be here. And then the grain, I think after he was done with them in the spring, maybe, I think. And then we, once we would get the, uh, all the zoning and PUD stuff in place, we will hold that till that's all approved.
He went through preliminary plat, site plan review, but there were not enough checkmarks, so he's going back to P and Z before it comes here, so. You'll see it in October.
Um, anything else on this subject? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler. Stolman.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Dean.
Yeah.
Okay, now we have a lot of discussion items, so let's start with fencing. And utility drainage easements and fencing within, I suppose.
Ow, yeah, I agree. We've gone through this process the last ten years of putting these easements in for a reason. And it's really cost a lot of, lot of money for a lot of developers and builders to make this happen. Putting a fence in a, in a drainage area is a, is a catch area for water, for grass, clippings, all that to plug it up. Direct that water in a different location, so yeah, definitely not.
Another reason why you check your property class before you buy something, it's not the city council's fault that they bought a property and don't know the reasons. Especially new subdivisions, some of those lots have utility and easement.
Dave, you wanna give the engineering opinion? Um, a couple of things that council's referring to is it appears all the last, I don't know how many years, Leslie could fill in, but it does appear, a lot of times when people purchase their properties now, they do not know where their easements are, so a lot of times they'll try and fill out a fence permit and will tell them no, because there's a drainage easement there. And so there's a lot of, I don't know where that, the exact solution is, but it does seem like now um, there are people with less knowledge of what they're actually buying, and a lot of times we're catching the slack at City Hall on some of these rules, so I don't know, Dave, you wanna just fill in engineering, just so we've at least got a message a little bit to the public?
Sure. So the purpose of the drainage easement, a couple of things, if we have a storm sewer that runs between lots, we reserve an area that we can use to maintain that storm sewer, that's an access and stormwater easement. In certain situations, low spots of streets are a good example, if the intakes don't function properly, water has to have a secondary path, if it can't go through the pipes, it still has to get somewhere without flooding the properties. So there's usually a, at the low points, a drainage easement that goes out to an outlet, so that overflow can occur. Those are critical, that we keep them open and unobstructed, typically if someone puts a fence and debris accumulates on that, that can be a blockage and it'll cause damage to the adjacent property because the water can't flow through there. So when we look at the purpose of the easement, if it's just for a storm sewer, for example, that's similar to a sanitary easement, if there's no overflow route planned, there's a potential we could grant permission to the property owner to be able to put fence there. Uh, and the rear yard swales, if it's the upstream property and the swale starts there and the fence on the easement is only gonna obstruct that property, and they're only going to cause damage to themselves. So they, they could easily do that within that area. Um, doing other items, um, so we can't really protect them completely from themselves, and if they wanted to put a fence there and we made them aware of the situation, that's fine, but it's the situation where somebody has the potential to impact not only themselves, but somebody else that we have to be very careful about. So as we look at the possibility of granting waivers or exceptions to this, we just need to keep in mind what the purpose of the easement is and what the potential impacts are if the easement doesn't function.
And also that if there's a fence there and we have to go maintain, we have to go do something in that easement area, we're gonna pull your fence out and you're gonna put it back. But that'll raise another red flag, because sometimes it's not the person who put the fence and it's too crowded on your, down the road, and they have no idea.
Who's dropping the ball? What, those are not selling?
I, I, so you get a, you get a title opinion, and they're on these, uh, title guarantee forms, they're not very easy to read. So, I mean, but people can, people should put their lot when they buy, I mean, especially a new one, I mean, they almost all have easements in. So.
So is there anything as a city we can do so that they don't come to the city?
No, it's.
You just stick a sign and say. I mean, yeah, there'd be.
What you're asking for is better education, so. Um.
Yeah.
Some of the more common construction companies I've talked to, or they've called me, so for an example, Midwest Builders called me and we talked about what to do there, um, and so they're talking with their common realtors. So hopefully there's better awareness in our more common realtors. Where we've run into larger issues is first-time home buyer or first-time new buyer, so like it's an actual new building. And then a realtor that's not either from West Branch or doesn't do regular business with West Branch. You know, it's closing the deal, or it's a younger realtor that, you know, doesn't know all the things that happen after a sale gets closed. Um, but that's, I mean, to answer your point, I think we're trying, but I think there's always gonna be somebody to that doesn't know and is gonna assume the city's just taking their land and not letting them do what they want with it. As I told Colton, I've had requests for property owners next to them to remove a berm, and it's like, no, we're not, we're not doing that, um, because that's gonna just go, that water's gonna go straight to you. But I, I don't know the full answer, um, but there is, I don't know, lack of education or knowledge of those understandings.
I'd be a little bit nervous on our part if Matt gives an exception.
Can you give any?
To, uh, that's, that's a lot on.
Got three houses and then all of a sudden four houses.
Alright.
Expect not to get a phone call on that one.
Easier to just say, no, can't do it.
Well, not only that, but then it goes back to the third owner down the road, and there's a flood, your fence caused problems. Well, the guy that put the fence in you caused a problem, but the person in the body don't know that. And now they're gonna come in here and they're gonna be like, why is a lot of fences in there, blah, blah, blah. And I've sat through that meeting before.
Oh, that was.
Just not do it.
You do, but there's twenty pages of information that we can give them, and you gotta pick and choose. You know, nobody's gonna read through twenty pages. It's always a battle of what, what things.
I do.
Go ahead, Matt.
A lot of the issues come from different part of the house. They don't realize that after that, they don't treat the fence permit, a lot of saying, you can't put it there, and they go, my lot of the house, they thought, now my fence is this big, that's, that's, that's what they're running. Now it's, this is pretty in one of the subdivisions, the newest one, that's the issue there, and it's, everybody bought one there, assuming they had the whole yard, and then got told.
And they ain't very big to begin with.
Yeah.
Ended up fairly small yards out.
They lost ten or twenty feet.
Wasn't worth it, because we just off the back of the patio, we dumped it, so.
Now, can you do wireless fences in the easement?
That's gonna be my question. I don't, why wouldn't you be able to?
They're not gonna obstruct anything.
Those are the only.
Yeah, I don't think they would. You would need me.
We don't have any code about those.
If we had to go in and tear up the ground and their underground within the bay and it's got cut.
Still already, it's a cheap route.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
What do you have here, Dave?
This is a situation where we had a forty-foot easement on the back of lots three through ten. And recently, uh, in response to comments made on this issue, we did meet with the, uh, the developer and went out on site, took a look at this, and the water currently drains on the north lots, lots thirty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-five. So lots three through seven, we were able to adjust that and delete that easement altogether, because the water doesn't flow there, everything on those lots flows straight to the south across those lots. So we were able to address some of that situation here, just by looking at it a little closer, doing an onsite analysis and identifying that some of the easement they had proposed wasn't necessary. So we still have a few lots here that you'll see, and this situation is unique, because we're going to have lot seven where we can put the fence all the way to the back, lot eight, they wouldn't be able to do it on the east side, lot nine wouldn't be able to do on either side, and lot ten would be able to put a fence up to the easement line on the west side of the lot, so they wouldn't be able to put the fence on the lot line. So that gives you an idea of multiple, um, scenarios that occur just in one plat with a few lots, even though we were able to reduce the number of impacted lots, we still have a variety of different situations that occur in a single plat.
Is that berm, is it on these people's property, or is it on the?
There's a high point right on the property line, and everything flows to the north from that high point, apparently, across lots thirty-seven to thirty-four.
Yeah.
There's two small evergreens on the upper right of lot seven, and as we were standing out there, that's where it breaks, it starts to come to the south. And even with the proposed regrading, it doesn't change the drainage there, it still flows to the north on those west lots. And you'll see there on lots four through seven, there's an existing twenty-foot sanitary easement. So even though that's a sanitary easement, we can put the fence over that, we get to lot eight, and it has a sanitary and storm sewer, it's the same width, but since it's for storm sewer and overflow, we can't put the fence there. Like, that's showing the difference in the type of easement, um, the situation, how it impacts the decision of whether or not the fence can be placed.
So we would allow fence on, over sanitary?
Yes.
It's just at risk of being torn out.
Right, the only, the only time we'd have to access that is if we had to do repair, where a storm sewer, every time it rains, there's a potential problem to occur.
Right. Alright, thank you, Dave. So what, what are you looking for here?
Your initial feedback, so it sounds like.
Sounds like you got it.
Yep, no, and I think it's good, but I think it's also good that Gregory's here, because we do get a lot of residents that just don't know, and I think any type of awareness is helpful, so that was part of it, too, was just to kinda discuss it, too.
Alright.
I got what I needed.
Thank you.
So, so what are we gonna do with the ones on Sullivan that already has fences in? Can you just leave them?
For one, there was an administrative error, and that one, I guess, would be my question for you guys on what to do. But on the other ones, they either didn't fill out a permit, or they did not fill out correctly. Um, those ones, I have no issues telling them to move, but there's one where we had an admin error, and it's either we um, grandfather that one due to an admin error, or we pay to move the fence, because it was our error. So that's where that one, specific one's tricky, but the other ones, where they didn't fill out a permit, or they didn't do so, and uh, one of our staff members documented that you can't put it here, and then they did it, those ones, I've got no issues telling them to move. It's just the, the tricky one where we made the error. We learn from those errors, and that's why I told Roger, is sometimes it's tricky when a staff member is reviewing permits, that's why I kinda prefer that we've got Terry, but for fences, it's generally staff, but we're always go, 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 and you want your building inspector to be stopped, slow down, uh, and that's sometimes where staff doing conflicts with what we should be looking for in inspector, so. It's gonna matter what you guys wanna do, if you guys wanna pay to have it moved ten feet back, or leave it as is.
Well.
Drainage area?
Yeah.
The end of the drainage, the beginning of the drainage?
Higher or the lower?
Middle.
Middle.
Move it.
Let's say leave it until it becomes a problem.
So.
Move it.
We say no, we say no, we can't.
Right. You can't, you can't give one person.
And, and what if somebody else might.
Too late, accidentally.
That's the thing, Terry's gotta start slowing down.
So on this one, it wasn't Terry, it was our staff, so.
Okay.
Just so you guys know. I do.
But.
She looks like quite a few.
But the, these swales or whatever, you know, and the barns, we're missing those. So we gotta make sure that those stay.
Can we, can we put signage up? In those whale areas?
Like a little.
I don't see why not, if it's our, right away, the issue is, uh, maybe we can't, depending on what it is, maybe Dave's more qualified to answer that one. Uh, if you put signs in drainage easements, if that's allowed.
Turn you left and. See, right?
That's great, I'm a problem.
Yeah, see, right?
Not our property, the easement.
Not our property, one, and number two, if you put a sign in there.
That's another block.
It's a rise, it's a rise issue, I mean, you know.
Okay, but they come to us when this stuff has been cleared out, and now the neighbors are coming to us because their property is getting flooded.
So if people start move, what needs to happen is. So if people start move, what needs to happen is, is there's gotta be some teeth to our ordinances, if people get in there and start. Moving burns and digging out burns, it's gonna have to hurt, I mean, we're gonna have to put it back, we're gonna have to charge them and it's gonna have to hurt. And when people start hurting, they start following the rules.
No, no, it's big if people didn't fill out a permit, that's a violation, so that's easy. It looks like it would be short of it, but good.
Okay, um, we ready to move on?
Do we do send letters to the people that have? Send them a letter and say, hey, you're in violation and then evening, you got to take the fence down, you got.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You have to, you have to get a fence permit, if they didn't get a permit, that's violation right there. And they don't take it down. Oh, I can, they can, they can, they can get a, they can get a minimal fraction for.
It would be like not following permit rules or along those lines.
Just making sure we're covered there, I mean, don't.
Just for Larry, our permit does have the section of the code. On the permit, it was done before I started, it does say on there, a sketch is required. They don't always do that, we always have to ask for it. It does tell them they're responsible to know where easements are on their property and their property pens. It says all that on there, they sign it and date it. We look at it, so it's kind of a, you know, you've had all the rules, whether you read the, read the rules or not. So I think we're in our rights to send them the letters and tell them we've done a post inspection and. It appears that you have violated the rules set forth.
Alright, let's move on. Lead service lines. One coming up with that.
So not asking for any type of action at this point, just kinda giving you guys the rundown of. Um, October, by Oc- uh, by October twenty twenty four, um, Public Works is going to have to locate. All the lead service lines in the city, we currently do not locate, nor do we know where service lines are. We only take care of the main, but this is a federal mandate. I'm sure it's in response to the issues in Flint. As things trickle down, um, now it's getting towards the local level. Uh, there's no indication that they will need to be replaced, which is why I'm not asking of anything of council at this point. But I only anticipate that at some point, if we're doing an inventory. Probably gonna be asking people, my guess, we're probably gonna be asking people. To get rid of lead service lines, um, I've not heard that from the federal government yet. It's lead and copper is what you gotta inventory. And they're really hitting lead, but I'm sure once lead's done, they're gonna start going after copper. Go ahead, man.
There's gonna, I mean, the copper is probably one of the things they'll look at next, but. But what it is, they, they want inventory of every type of pipe, they wanna know where your lead ones are. And they, they haven't said they're gonna make us remove them or anybody remove them. But that's all, so that, I mean, eventually, I would, I would guess that if they don't in the next ten years, I, I don't know why they are making us do it if they don't. So that's something that I would. I would suggest that we, that we think about over the next few years.
Just need to get into the basement and see what's coming up.
Yeah, that's basically what is, so, yeah, that's kind of, I mean, it could have been. So if somebody fixes something from the outside of the house, out to the curb.
Right.
It could be copper, it could be clear core, it's, it's hard to tell.
Under the street.
Yeah.
I cut it off on my side of the street and.
Yeah, so basically all we can do is what we can do though, so we inventory them, we say. This one's copper, this one's lead, this one's. Whatever HDP, that's our, I mean, galvanized. They have a form that we're gonna have to use to inventory them, that they haven't given out the forms yet, so they told us we got two years to do it. And they don't even have them available to us, so, but it is something that. If we look at it, we can go back and look at house ages, basically like the east side of town. And all of that is what's gonna be hit probably all of it downtown, downtown definitely is. Actually, look at them.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, so. The way I was looking at for this winter, having Tim, which we haven't discussed any of this yet, but. At least put something together to figure out how to get, whether it's. Sending a letter to, a lot of other towns have just sent, started putting together letters to send to the homeowners. Asking them, call us, let us know, take a picture of it, send it to us, something like that, so it's not as intrusive for us to go in there. A lot of people don't want you in their house, so go and look at it.
Taking a picture, I'm going to somebody. Yeah, over here.
Gotta find out what some pumps are.
Well, and that's the other thing is that it doesn't hurt to get in there and just do some pump inspections every once in a while too, so.
On the outside looking in, yes, we may want to consider some sort of help, whether it's a temporary part time, but. Until I, we know the specifics, I'm not gonna ask you guys to do anything at this point, I don't wanna overreact. Ask for something if we don't need it. But I know Matt, you mentioned something that some other cities do, like they have a grant program.
Yeah, so. This has been going on for a few years. I think probably four or five years ago was the first time that they started talking about doing this lead inventory. And some other towns said that they were starting on that just as a proactive thing, like a bigger communities. Where they're taking part of their water budget and they're saying, whatever, some of them did twenty thousand years, some of them did fifteen. And they said the first ten who came in, we're gonna get two thousand dollars towards their replacement. When it was gone, it was gone, if you didn't come in and say you were taking it, you're out of luck, you just haven't do it, so. They, they were doing that, it's not something you have to do, it's just something that some other towns have. Done to kinda push people to get it done on their own without. No, it wouldn't, it's just, but it's two thousand off of your five thousand or whatever.
Gets them to show up.
Yeah, so that's kinda, cause if you, what they were doing is telling them, you're gonna be forced to do this at some point, some other ti- like Iowa City. They uncover a lead service line, they're digging it up, I assume Corvusville's the same way. I don't know, a lot of towns, if you find a lead service line, it's coming out all the way back to the main, you don't. Cover it back up, so the DNR hasn't said that's actually what we have to do yet. But they will at some point, that's. I guess I'm just assuming, but when they start doing these things, it's usually for a reason.
So. Fans were replacing the water main. A lot of them on the east side. Then why don't? We try and help those homeowners that do have lead. Somehow. I'm not saying pay for the whole thing.
Generally, and I don't know how they, how they have them drawn up, but generally any water main replacements we've done in the last. Six years, we replace the curb or the, the service back to the curb stop. And then tie onto it, so they get. Half to two thirds of their service replaced. So any of those mains should have at least back to the curb stop.
Which is in the yard or not?
Yeah, I mean, our coach is supposed to be in the right of way, th- there's very few of them that actually are, they're in the, a lot of them are in the yard. So the only other thing is then. Um, some other towns then say, well, some towns actually own up to the curb stop, but then they have at the same time, you could have. A reduced price or whatever, cause the homeowner then pays from the curb stop into the house. At the, you know, at the time that the work's being done, but it's not done by the city because. I suppose that makes us kinda liable for the work, going through the wall of their basement, all of that, so. Go up to the curb stop, give them the opportunity to participate in that work. They pay for, from the curb stop and I'm just throwing out a scenario that I've heard of other towns doing the same thing.
And I would think that would be something we. We would notify the homeowners that this is coming.
Yeah, and I think that's. If we have the mains going in over the next year or whatever, that's something we need to start working on and figure out how we wanna do it and then implement it.
You have money in a low interest loan or zero interest loan.
Well, I would kinda hope that whoever we're. Bidding with or whoever gets the job. We give the homeowners a reduced rate, beans are right there digging in their yard anyhow.
And that's, that's the whole idea of it is hopefully that's possible to do is give them the lowest rate possible. At the same time, if we're doing that. If they replace the service on the inside, they're gonna pull a meter out, pull everything out, you might as well go and replace the meters on that side of town at the same time, which we already have the meters. Kinda, we have a good inventory because of the houses that we're bottom for and then. We can rotate through that stuff, so I mean, that's. It'll be a lot of work all once, but that's kinda. Kinda what we've been running over down at the shop, I guess.
I think that's a bigger conversation to have with east side water mains when we get. Into it more, um, but I think that's something we might as well consider. How you guys fund it or whether we make it mandatory or optional, that would be up to you guys to decide, but. Um, that's something Matt and I have talked about.
So making it optional, it might be that they never have to go back and replace from their curb stopping their house. But we don't know that either, it could be. Two years from now, the DNR's, or it's actually EPA comes back and says, now DNR tell them they got. Ten years to work through a tenth of their town every year and once it's done, it's done. At some point it'll.
But, but not to the house.
Right, and right now, the, the other mains we've done, Main Street, well, any of the other ones we've done, the city paid for the curb, up to the curb stop. Cause we're already cutting them off anyway. Um, in a lot of cases, we don't know where the curb stops are, so it. It works kinda in our favor to put them in and they're the least expensive at that point to put the curb stop in while you have it all dug up, so. You already have to tap it, you gotta put pipe on, so instead of putting a joint, you know. Six feet out, under the curb or something, you run back to the curb stop and just put in the curb stop.
Oh, is there some kind of? Waiver or something they signed, cause what if it breaks? Five years from now, it breaks back at the main or something, we, we replaced it. As me as a homeowner, I'd be like, whoa. You guys did it wrong in every week before.
I mean, as we've done it now. We have. So Main Street, they tied on. They put in new mains, back to the curb stop, tied onto a couple of lead services, the lead certainly can, and they had to be fixed. They did it within the first year, the first one was the first year and there's, there's two other in the second year. So the city paid for them.
That's a tricky connection, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, the lead, yeah, it's not something that you wanna do, so.
Those, I think what you would have a twelve month, basically. Um, we were to do some of the service lines, it would be what, twelve months guaranteed or whatever without issues?
And that's what we went off of was the maintenance bond, how long the company was. Responsible for their work and not that they were, you probably went out and helped fix one when you're at Lynch's, cause we couldn't quite get them back to do it, so.
Alright, thank you. Um, budget amendments and audit.
I have a quick question about audits. About a year ago, when, when did? Right about the time, the end of the year, when did you start, I?
June fourteenth.
June fourteen.
Yes.
Okay, so we got a letter, I got an email today about our audit. And I just wanted to tell, good job.
Thank you, yes, first audit, it was, well, at least with West Branch. Um, it, it went pretty well, um, it was, it started late. Um, usually, as I understand it, it usually starts around December. This year because um, there's not enough auditors to go around, we started in March. Um, and it just ended, I mean, it crossed fiscal year, so it, it was. It was, it took over, but I mean, it's done, um, that there are some findings. Um, some findings that we've seen before, like segregation of duties. Um, part of that is that the city, um, and the firefighters and also the friends of the library, there's not enough staff. Or sometimes there's not enough volunteers for people to do, um, the different duties that needs to take to segregate those duties. Um, but it, it looked good, I don't know if you had. Some time to, to look at it.
No, I, it told me what pages to turn to to find out the bad stuff and I turned that, I looked at the bill.
Yeah. Um, the other big thing was the firefighter foundation account back bank reconciliation. Um, I met with Chad, um, I think it was probably sometime in the spring. Um, and we um, have new spreadsheets that he can use to reconcile that. Um, so we worked together, we met for about two weeks. And so I think they're, they're set for this fiscal year.
One, one of the questions I had, Heidi, was I'd read something about the CDG grant costs of problems. I remember us talking and voting on stuff so that wouldn't cause problems.
As, once again, I was not here during that fiscal year, so I'm not really sure what happened, I don't know. Um, what hap- but what happened was we spent. Money before we amended, so that caused issues. Yeah, it was a food. And I'm not sure why we didn't amend, I'm sure, I'm sure there was a reason, I just don't know what that was.
He was in a big hurry to get, the deadline was coming and we had to spend the money, were we received the money or?
We, I researched it and we received the money in August. Of twenty twenty. So we, we had plenty of time, I think, to, to amend, I just don't know why we did not.
Cause the job wasn't done. And then some things got added.
Right, staff transition after that, so how would you know? There probably was staff transition too, when it was finalizing, so then how would staff know, be my guess.
It was amended, it just was amended. Too late, it was amended, it wa- it, it was after the fact, so like I said, we received. Yeah. Yeah. No, no, not at all.
Probably won't happen.
Um, those were really, that was really it, everything else went very well. And I don't know, do you guys have any other questions on the audit?
Is the library board going the same thing the firefighters are doing them?
Ask you what, Jody?
The fund, the, the.
That the library board was also.
They, they are not segregating the duties.
Right.
Yeah.
So are they gonna do the same thing?
They're, they're, right, so segregation of duties was city. Uh, friends of library and the firefighters.
Hmm.
Um, the bank reconciliation was only firefighters, not the friends of the library. But it's, it's taken care of, I think it was just a matter of, of figuring things out and. Um, I showed Chad what we do for the city.
Been on there every year, so.
Lots of this stuff isn't necessarily anybody doing anything wrong.
Just everybody wears two hats or.
Well, the state just does. They make weird rules on how, what art the city does with.
Well, one.
Who audits them, do we get to go audit them?
Yeah, we should.
At least to get, Corvus to get the same exact segregation of duties.
And you guys are a bigger city too.
Because we don't have enough people that do it, we have. So we have people who can't write checks or people who just do it, accounts payable, two counts receivable, they don't, one can't do the other, but it's still not a good enough. So, I mean, you're always gonna get that.
And we have, you know, made some small changes, but you know, um. That do reflect that we're trying, I mean, Adam now is taking the deposits to the main where before it was Leslie, so. You know, but if one of us is not here or it's just one person, you know, if there's, it it gets really hard to. To do that segregation.
So I have a question. So, does the firefighter foundation even have to do it, beans are their own foundation and they're not. Oh, they still have to be audited.
They give public funds, so then it needs to be publicly audited. It's a special. A special financial. Guess group of the city, I mean, they may not work on behalf of the city, but they. Give donations to the fire department, which benefits the city. So those need to be audited.
It's the same as the library.
That's correct, it's the association, right, and that they all do get some. Public monies. And Adam, I don't know what you wanted to talk about the amendment.
I think just to let you know that, kinda with the comments of the. CDBG grant will be a little bit more proactive in our amendments, maybe twice a year we'll amend. Um, just so we're not, we're keeping you guys aware of everything. Um, the biggest ones of notes. Um, Heidi and I are still kinda working out our kinks um in terms of. Making sure our budget matches the state auditing reports and vice versa, but. The biggest one of note was the peat and soil cleanup project that was not budgeted at all. I think most of the people on here were not on the council at the time, but I wanna say five or six years ago. Um, they told Mr. Peaton that they would clean up the soil, that was in a resolution, so it was all recorded. Um, I could back that up, but that was about. Well, seventeen thousand, somewhere in there, between labor and materials to clean out the soil. Um, and that's basically our tree budget, so I don't know where else. By tree budget, that's removing trees, I don't know where else to take that from, other than. Reserve funds, or we just don't remove as many trees. That's, cause it's all under, you know, public work slash community beautification. So just letting you know. Um, we'll have a longer list of trees to be removed, um, obviously, if they're an emergency, we're gonna just take them down. But, or if, you know, another derecho happened, we take them down, but. I just know there's a couple people wanting trees removed that my answer is just flat out, we can't do it this year.
Well, the question I have about the peat and soil cleanup was. You know it was in a resolution, it was in a resolution that would be done by certain. And then I'm not even so sure that wasn't a goal. Say goal for.
I was, I was. I was on when it was a goal to get it done. Oh, it's been within the last five years.
Go check. We did that goal, Jody.
My guess is they got lost in transition from staff to staff.
That's right, cause I I kept hounding everybody last spring, when we gonna get this done, when we gonna get this done? It didn't happen until after fiscal year.
He tried.
And another one just is um training and stuff for a new police officer. I mean, there's other little ones, but sort of kind of major ones.
The LMI tip from fiscal twenty-two. That last year, that was last.
You can answer that better than I can.
We collected the money, we just did not um budget it. It's there, we just need to put it on on the state budget.
Well, that was funded, it just wasn't budgeted.
There you go.
Alright, anything else on this subject? Planning and zoning standard, design standards.
Oh, this was mentioned from council and just wanted to give you guys an update, um, each month. Coming in with like a new chapter for planning and zoning to review. Um, once they make edits. And once they pass one section, then I'll go down to the next, my guess is probably in a year. We'll probably have some formal. Code for city council to adopt, but what I don't wanna do is chapter after chapter after chapter. And then it gets confused when when we're implementing this stuff, so right now I'm just. Keeping it at planning and zoning um for their review, just letting you guys know we are. Addressing some of the community design standards, um, and we met with the chair, vice chair. Roger was there. We had one developer there. Carrier building inspector, just to provide comment, so it's not. Coming out of thin air, it was a small group that kinda provided some of those recommendations.
And the goal here is to have a more diverse. Just reduce the monotony of a fast growing town. Police staffing.
So I talked with the sheriff, so did Chief Hannah, um, we went. Went up there last week on Tuesday, just to talk about a couple things and how the pal maybe on call time would work. What I really want is a formal, you know, something in writing. Um, so we can kinda flush out some of the details, initial gut cost from them was a hundred and forty thousand for. How many hours of that was that to you? I was thinking forty-eight, but, so just know. That 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 doesn't mean I'm gonna propose that for you guys to consider, but just letting you know. And that's, that's what we talked about in the car too, so um. Just know we're trying to make progress on what to do in terms of on-call time or.
So, that's for forty-eight hours.
It says forty-eight on there, but you just said twenty. Twenty hours a week for a year?
So the conversation was approached, uh, the hours that we have that are available is forty-eight. The conversation is what's provided to the other communities is how we would be. Uh, billed based upon an hourly rate and our population. And the other communities receive X number of service, we would be asking for more hours than the other communities. For their contracts, so.
Cause we have more residents.
Well, that's why we would pay more, but it's it's base, it's same hourly rate, you're just paying per capita by your population, so. But if I recall the conversation correctly, the the sheriff gives those communities, they try to give them, you know, twenty hours of. For that same dollar amount that they're paying the. Uh, if I recall correctly, it was it was a week.
Currently Cedar County. Wides us with twenty hours of coverage.
They provide us with zero. So the part of the discussions is what are we expecting? Uh, of that, we haven't hashed all those things out, so. Are we, you know, those those are the questions that still need to be uh ironed out, but the. Is the expectation that you're putting a deputy in town for that period of time? Um, or is it just you're handling calls as they come in? And those things haven't, because those are two very different things, you know. On whether you're expecting call coverage or visibility.
I would say the two things, Cedar County does not charge us currently for dispatch. Don't charge us for something or jail too, so um. Garner, we got charged for both, that ran. Dispatch itself was like forty-six thousand.
What charged us?
West Branch residents do pay for those services.
The, and so, so basically, on the jail services, if I understand the way the the uh. If I understand correctly, if I were to arrest someone on a municipal ordinance, the sheriff can bill us. For that inmate's stay. It's municipal, so you know, when I arrest somebody on a state charge. It's the county is prosecuting on behalf of the state, and so uh you wouldn't get those fees, but. If I understood our conversation, it would. The one forty was an estimate for this twenty hours coverage that the rest of the communities provide are providing.
The problem is.
That's for a year, is that a year? Twenty-nine hours a week for a year.
Sixty dollars an hour. Well, fifty-five, I think is what.
Hundred forty thousand over twenty hours a week is a hundred.
Why I'm thinking it's forty-eight.
It it could be, I I may have missed it.
Hundred thirty-four dollars, if it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars, twenty hours a week.
The problem is, if you have them on call, they can on-call, they can be clear over loud on-call. That does us no good.
Okay, I'll be the one that says it. So we hire a. Fifth officer.
Whoa.
Listen to me now. We hire a fifth officer. Cause every time, every time we uh hire an officer, we're always told this is the number we need for twenty-four hour coverage. This is the number we, nobody really knows how many officers it's going to take for twenty-four hour coverage. But, so if we hire a fifth officer. We can do that for less than a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Be close.
Six is your number.
Look back at our last meeting, the reason we were looking at Cedar County is because we were having trouble getting a fourth officer. So that's why we were looking at. Cedar County, not not adding a fifth, we were just trying to cover our fourth.
Actually, no, why they were looking at this was to try, cause we hired a fourth. What we were doing this for was to try to alleviate the on-call time, cause that would help us retain the officers we had.
It was a temporary solution.
Yeah, we're trying to eliminate the burnout, I mean, that's basically what you're doing, cause you're gonna have people work here, they're gonna burn out, they're gonna leave, they're gonna go somewhere else.
Again, we aren't recommending anything at this point, we're just trying to give you guys as much information as possible. And that's based off of you guys telling me when I first got here, public safety was number one, so I thought that was most important to keep updating on it.
Well, let me throw this out there. Say we're like every other community in Cedar County and we do away with our police department. They can buy our cars, they can take our officers. How much coverage would we get? Beans, we're the only town this side of the sea of the ri- river. And we're twenty-two miles from any community in Cedar County, how much coverage would we get?
It would be a contract, we would have to demand. Presence.
Twenty, twenty hours a week. That's what everybody else gets.
Give that box at town hall. No, box of guns. Hypnotize people as they come in. Here you go.
No, I think that's the concern that I. I have with you, Jody, is. You know, if we didn't have a police department here in West Branch, I think. And even Sheriff Wellington will tell you, it would not be the same quality that you're getting out of your West Branch.
Well, I know that, I know that.
It's not feasible, I mean, I mean, the council, you guys can do, decide to do whatever you want, but at some point, the community's gonna grow and you're gonna wanna police department back if you did that. And it would be un, you couldn't afford it at that point.
Actually, I was talking to Mike about this a little bit, and he says, once you lose your police department, real hard to get it back. Because you're starting from scratch, you're buying cars, you're buying, you're buying everything. Once it's gone, it's gone forever.
Okay.
I don't understand how we used to do it with two officers.
We just do it one. Those those officers didn't handle the number of calls we handled. The expression times are different, so uh, there's a lot more we expect out of our officers in training and. And just their professionalism that maybe you didn't quite have back then.
Well, not only that, but usually if I had a problem with my neighbor, I'd go over and knock on the door and talk to the neighbor about it. People don't do that anymore, you know, the neighbor's dog's barking, instead of going and talking to their neighbor, they call the police. It happens, I don't know. I mean, you get phone calls, so so isn't it?
Rhetorical question. I withhold my answer.
Yeah.
Do we have any recommendation, what direction we want to go?
Uh, so I'll, I don't wanna speak for the city administrator, but.
He's asking council if they have got.
Yeah, I'm asking council.
I think we need to look at hiring another officer.
I don't think that cures it, though.
Maybe in six months, when when Lucas gets six or eight or a year from now, if Lucas is on full time. Some of the burnout would be alleviated, the current burnout. You could think about a. Entertainment of a fifth officer. What's the burnout reduction?
So right now, we're at seventy hours, seventy hours that we have on call uh with three. Um, some of that is because of our contract. Um, some of that is because of our contractual obligation to the school that we have for our SRO program. Um, and. So when we were full staff, we're back down to forty-eight hours, and and that schedule kind of helps maintain some quality of life where we're not forcing every weekend. An officer has to work every weekend. So not to get into the semantics of how our schedule functions, but basically you add, um, you know, if you added a fifth. You could pretty well knock down quite a bit of that on call time, but it's. But it's still gonna be present, and then you're gonna have vacations and sick time, so.
So, my question would be, is do we need to. Review our obligation of the school? And if we have this issue with our police department on time?
Uh, we, we have spoken with the school, and they, at least their initial, they've been pretty supportive with, we're giving them as much as we can give them. Uh, we're probably not meeting our obligation with our twenty-eighty agreement, but we're at least. Giving them as much as we can and still maintaining uh our patrol time.
Would it help our on-call time if we didn't, weren't obligated to the school?
Uh, I think I would rather address, you know, having a heartache from on-call time than. That is such a successful program that I, I will never stand in front of you and say it needs to be reduced, it should be increased.
My, my. I thought would be is the school would hire an officer. Private, private.
So you're basically seeking more of a contribution from the school, and.
Yeah.
So right now, they pay fifty-fifty for the time that we contract, and I don't know if it'd be reasonable to ask any more than that. You know, with, with that program, it just. For us, it's so successful that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, should the school hire somebody?
I don't know, I don't think they would entertain that, and I think they still have to be affiliated with us. I mean, they'd have to start their own police department, basically.
So if there's an incident, is, and Kathy's working the school, is she freed up to?
Yeah, she'll, she'll peel out of it, yeah, yeah, she'll pull off of whatever she's doing if there's an emergency in town.
Not, it's not a cheap dilemma either, trying to think of a short-term direction we need to get.
I think you just let us continue to research as many options as possible. We'll try and present two or three options or recommendations.
I would not dissolve our police department, for sure, that's just a bad idea. So I put that out, that's off the table.
I think there's gonna be some tough discussions we have, and we're going into the budget season. Come up with some solutions, one way or the other, on how we're gonna handle this, so it can be budgeted for next year. You know, obviously adding another officer, or two officers, or paying the county that much isn't going to be something that can happen out of this budget.
So you're the question. Not advocating, but a question, so obviously. Other towns get twenty hours of coverage, I'm assuming that's drive-through coverage. So what happens when? They call, somebody calls, and the mechanics build. They just don't show up?
No, that, that time's counted, so like.
If they reach, they're at nineteen and a half, somebody calls, and we're all forty minutes away, get ten minutes away and then turn around.
No, that, and, and don't, I hope, don't, please don't take me for a word that it's hard twenty hours. It's, it's, what, what happens in those contract towns, and I, sheriff can speak for himself. But basically, an officer will come in and do extra patrol, so they'll come in and they'll sit and, and do things that normally patrol officers would do. And they just log it so that they can actually demonstrate that they, they're meeting their contracted time. But then if there's calls for service that are generated in the community, those hours of work are also shown for the number of hours that they've handled situations in their communities.
So their hundred and forty could go up or down.
Uh, from what I understand, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but what I, what I understand, it's just uh flat. Like, it's not a per call basis, it's a. Flat fee, and this is the target that they try to meet.
Is it possible to harvest manpower from another agency, Iowa City, West Liberty, or? Or, or one shift a week or something like that?
So it, you know, it's always possible, you can contract with another agency to um do a twenty-eighty agreement. With that agency, the downside you have is those. People, if they come from Iowa City, Johnson County area, it's a different judicial district, it's different, you know? And so you have a bunch of small things that can be big headaches if somebody's not used to the procedure, because the procedure at Cedar County Jail is far different than the procedure at the Johnson County Jail. On booking inmates, so it'd just be a burden for training purposes. In court.
There might be a, somebody that's hungry out there to work a shift at. Eight hours a week.
Yeah, but everybody's short police officers, they can probably get eight hours where they're at. Being way more or less.
Just a good judge. Okay, we'll uh keep dwelling on it, and uh thank you for it. Capital Improvement Plan progress.
You're up, Matt. I went and looked at that lagoon, wow, that thing moved a lot of dirt.
Yeah.
Holy cow. Forty-foot cut there, at least.
So the Greenview Connection, uh, Luch has brought us Rock. It's been Friday afternoon, they, yeah, was not conducive to getting that done, so we'll get that rock moved tomorrow. Um, and get that all graded out and then beat in, that'll sit for a while, pull all the barricades and that road at least be through. Uh, I met with DNN Fence for Lenox Fence, that has to be moved as part of that easement agreement. So that, he told me about the second to third week of October before they can move it, so that's. He'll give me a price on it and get it all laid out, we'll make sure Lenox are. Agreeable to exactly the layout of it, and then we'll go ahead and get it scheduled. Else want me to talk about that, that good, or?
Also, that connection, so that, the curvature part of that, that hooks to the Lenox and the other driveway. We just leave that in there, not do anything, and extending the driveways, just put the street through and then let that curve hook up to the street.
We can, I mean, that's, at the moment, we don't have. Any kind of agreement written up with them, where we're gonna take that out and make the driveway go straight out or anything like that, so it's.
Just thinking out loud, would that create confusion if someone, they come to a Y on the road?
Yeah, I don't know if it would or not, I mean, the other way is I could take out the north end of it, and they can just go in the south end, and it's shorter, it doesn't matter to me. I don't know if it'll be confusing for people, or if they'll just go straight through.
Roger, you will know which way to go when it goes out of the driveway. Goes around.
I mean, the other thing we could do is leave it in there and see if we're gonna have issues.
Yeah, I, I don't see spending money moving it.
What do we have still need?
Yeah, that'd be my question, is if we plow through there and keep up the.
I'm not quite sure how that works with street. You'd say it's a thorough street.
Not the street anymore?
It's not the street anymore.
Unless we actually give it to them, then, then it's.
That's the problem, that's not the street anymore, then they have no access to that street and get the driveway.
I know.
So it's either gotta stay a part of the street, we gotta maintain it.
So we need to plow it.
Or we gotta bring them to the street.
Thank you, Jody, you know how much.
Not a street anymore.
We have to be a part of the street, or do we have to? I don't think we can abandon it and have no street access, would be my assumption.
The tree's in the way for one of the driveways, we'd have to remove the tree, wouldn't we?
Yeah, that'd have to come in order for it to be a straight shot out of there.
Why is the driveway up to the street?
The only reason it would is if you actually gave them the property, their dri- if you were to say that's the driveway for. The metal house, it'd go, it'd go through the front yard of the other property. But I mean, because it's on a circle, so you have the one here would actually own where their driveway would be. I mean, if you were to actually give that property to the homeowners, that the driveway would, I would think, need to be moved, so it's straight out from the other one.
To the, to the new street.
Better think about it, Grant, if you something.
Right now, the plan was just to get the street, or the street straightened out and the sidewalk put up to the end of it.
Longer, so you'd less work, we wouldn't have to plow it if we gave them a lot of driveway.
Yeah, just straight out and then gave the one area to be grass for the other.
Well, I'm the homeowner, and you're gonna give me another thirty feet of driveway, just plow out, I'm like, you can keep the other free.
They may not have a choice. I don't know.
We don't always have our choices.
So can we abandon that? Circle and just.
Keep your feet raw.
You gotta bring it right way up, too bad. Then you abandon the right of way.
And we can either offer to pay for them, and if they say no, then we'll say, oh, you gotta do it anyway, now you're. Hollow branch, and then, nope.
Well, get the street done first, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll keep.
All right. Say, that's kind of disgusting, so.
Yeah.
Not necessarily now.
Yeah, so, all right, go ahead, anything else?
No, I'm assuming Dave's gonna talk about the rest of this.
You're up, Dave.
Waste water plant. Tell you about it.
They hold.
Show you what it looks like.
So we're three and a half million dollar hole right now. You know anything more? I can see a lot of trees down there.
Where they are currently is trying to finish off the bottom of the lagoon, they need to have that seal, the clay layer, they excavate. Four inches, and they have to compact the six inches below that and then build it back up, and then take tests on it to make sure that we meet our permeability. Uh, requirements, that we don't have any seepage through there, because it's going to be a sewer lagoon. So we've had a testing agency out there doing tests on it on Friday, they are uh giving us the results here shortly to see if we passed.
There's no membrane, it's just a, the clay.
Just a clay layer, clay cellulose. Yeah, compaction tests and permeability tests on that, so that's, that's what they're working on currently. And while they're waiting for that to find out if it passed, they've been overworking on some miscellaneous structures. Um, we're going to have uh some delays because the gates, which shut off the flow. Pipes come into the structure, they have gates on the end, just a plate that slides down in a bracket. Um, those are delayed, just because of supply chain issues. So we've met with the contractor, look at ways to pipe around that, so that we can get this cell in operation, would include some temporary plugs and whatnot in order to make it work. Uh, that, that discussion's been ongoing, as they find out options, we discuss them on site when we meet, and try to keep things moving, so. The, the process is to get that passed, once that is uh done, then we can start putting the uh aeration system together. They would fill that lagoon and start using that as our first aerated basin, and then we would take the one that is currently in the west cell out of service, and we could haul the sledge out this fall. But we need to have this one operational to replace that one. So uh work on some piping to get around that middle one, and to continue to use the east one. In conjunction with this, and we would take the blowers that we have already and just temporarily pipe over to this for aeration. So that's the sequence, uh, short-term, and then once they get the sledge held out of the middle one, we would switch over and try to. Uh, put that one back in operation, take out the cell, and haul sledge out of that as well. So they're going to start working on the uh center part that's excavated, that's where the large um Sager cells are going to go, there's four cells that go in there. Uh, what they'll do is form large plywood boxes with liners, and they'll fill that with rock. And uh get the aeration, aeration system put in there as well, and build that up and then cover it with mulch. And once they have that completed, we can do the testing on that also, and get that put in service and test, that'll be next year. They're moving along pretty well, uh, as mentioned, they've moved a lot of dirt out there in a short amount of time, so pretty good progress, took advantage of the weather to get that done, and if we can get this first cell pass and start getting that put together, that's a big step.
Yeah, on schedule, ahead of schedule, any feeling for that?
Um, excavation on the first cell, we're right where we need to be, uh, we're, we're going to run into some issues with supply chain, and we're trying to work around that, but. There could be a potential, some of the equipment comes in a little bit later than we, we had hoped, but they're going to continue to work, we'll get it to meet schedule.
Testing the future, compaction or permeability, or did, I got a PM schedule by any means, or say it's good, it's good.
Uh, we, we already sent in samples and tested, so all they have to do is just get the compaction requirements.
But just for one time, you don't have to, like.
It's just one time, so we take, uh, we've got fifteen different spots, we took samples, we've got a requirement for so many on the side, so many on the bottom.
I just don't care, it's like a five years from now.
Only, only if there was a very noticeable issue where we couldn't put water in there.
Okay.
Probably have to drain it, yes.
Well, this is the same clay that resides here, I mean, this is the virgin clay, for the most part.
Get lucky every once in a while. Any questions on the waste water project? All right, what's the next? Well, to create, we are looking at the uh. Light blue is the existing stream on this that's shaded, and then you can see the uh half of the darker lines, that's the grading. For the new creek alignment as it goes through the area, and that's uh, that's proposed by Impact Seven G, we're working through. Putting that into the hydraulic model currently, so that we can get uh confirmation that what the proposal would do is going. Blood elevations that we were aiming for, and if we have to make some minor adjustments, we'll get that done. Uh, once we get everything taken care of on that, we should be able to um finalize any easements and uh get this project moving. Uh, one of the things that uh, that we did discuss on site uh last week was um right around uh. The old railroad abutments, Pete Tuttle owns the property, and I met with him after we discussed another issue, walked through the project with him, uh, he was very much in favor of it, so that was good to hear. So this is what I've been trying to tell you guys for years, so. So it was, uh, it was good to hear that he was cooperative, and uh, you know, we've got some things we need to take into consideration to protect his house, um, as the current abutment does. But for the most part, I think um. The, the property owners that we've talked to are in agreement, and the only issue that we have is the downstream property that we're still working through. And Kevin has uh some paperwork that he sent over today that I need to review, make sure that looks good, and then I think.
An application.
We'll continue, but there's a, if you look at the uh, the area there, nine point one four acres in the black outline. If we were to look at Maple Street extended, and you can see the south right away is extended, extended straight over. And it hits on the east side of the creek on the property line, goes up and encompasses that property, that's just over nine acres. If we were looking at trying to purchase the area that we would need for construction, and to have a, a line that aligns with that south right away. That seems like uh, that would be the area that we'd be looking to acquire if we wanted to purchase it outright. Uh, I know there's been some negotiations, it hasn't really been too favorable yet, um, so I think we may end up. Uh, maybe taking a little bit different approach than just uh the simple offer, so.
An application.
This, this other drawing shows a little bit of uh, discussing with gaskets, uh, the property owner, and. They have some wetlands in that area. And they have some wetlands in that area, um, they have C R P ground, they have, uh, forested area that state, uh, I guess, uh, N R C S has, uh, an agreement with them on, so there's a number of things that kind of compensate the site, it would be much cleaner if we could just buy out those contracts and not have to worry about the ongoing record keeping with mitigation in that area, so. That's one, one we've been talking with them about and why we were hoping to just purchase the property so that we could buy out the contracts and not have that hanging over us as we move forward, because inevitably we're going to have to go in and if, uh, trees die off or whatnot from the grading or we try to replant trees. Uh, we're going to have some issues with some of those that don't, don't make it and we'll have documentation, uh, until the end of that contract that we'll have to keep. And anything that doesn't comply with their requirements, we're responsible for the difference. To give you an idea though, the contract is about three hundred dollars to buy it out, so. If we could, if we could do that with the property purchase, that would be a lot cleaner than if we have to do the ongoing record keeping and upkeep on the trees.
Buy the contract without purchasing the property? They're gonna, they're gonna want their money then, once the R P, you don't buy it. But if we, we start out with the orange is the easement, correct, Dave, the permanent, and then the, uh, temporaries around that?
So the, the grading easement is the orange, that's the area that we want to keep and plot in, that's the limits of that, uh, lower area.
Yeah.
We want to keep all of that, prevent anybody from doing any grading or obstructing that in the future. That's the bench area that we need to, uh, instruct through their property.
But the minimum we'd have to buy is an easement, then it'd be temporary construction easement around some of that, the purchase. They're not willing to sell the whole property for a reasonable price.
And if we overlay the, uh, existing floodway and floodplain on there, it occupies the majority of the property, so you should pay full price for, it's available to properties for ground that isn't available at all and has, uh, floodplain restrictions on it. That, that's where we're struggling to try to get.
Yep.
To common ground.
Did, did they actually plant these trees as a forest?
Some of the trees were planted, some were volunteer, but they're treated the same according to the state forester.
I was wondering if they didn't know they planted it. I, I was wondering if the squirrel planted the seeds and now they call it a forest, that's what it's all.
So, uh, even the mulberries and some of the, the junk trees are considered of value, you know, under this contract and, uh, you know, they, they provide some habitat and whatnot, so. Uh, there was some discussion as to whether some of those are considered weeds, weeds are nuisance, uh, and he said, no, they, they're also valuable under this contract. That's the status on that project, uh, we, we should have the model updated here shortly and get confirmation with, uh, Impact Seven G, we have some minor adjustments that we're doing just to work around a sewer that runs along the creek, uh, where Barnhart is. East side of that creek that runs up to Main Street.
We talked about, she probably went first. Heard it on the council, there's like some shoring along on that east side of that creek, which is this place.
There is sheet piling in there currently.
Yeah.
We're likely moving it back maybe fifteen feet from there in order to widen that creek out, but we would do sheet piling again on a three one slope at the bottom to push the water, so we have a channel under low flow that carries and doesn't deposit sediment.
I remember. Then there's sewer that runs along there, right? That's why the, so you, would you have to move that? Obviously, that would.
Replacement of the sheet piling is three feet on the creek side of Bruce's, um, property of the sewer, so we can drive that sheet pile and maintain the sewer where it is. That gets us the forty feet that he requires in front of his building, still maintains the sewer in its existing spot and gives a little bit of room if we need to excavate.
You talking Bruce's, I want. The old Robin.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's that metal sticking up, it's kicking out.
Didn't go in when, when the bridge was put in, the new bridge? I think it was about the same time that, that bridge got replaced.
We talked about that back there and behind it.
All right, Dave, what do you got now?
So, one more photo. The expensive one. Just go around.
Hopefully you give them their hot wheel picture.
That was a good, I mean, I did like that one.
We have met with the school and I think we're pretty close to an agreement on that. Uh, we need to get that right away purchase that we can get utility relocation started on the north side of Main Street, uh, we've also met with the potential developer for part three of Meadows. And have been coordinating their grading and proposed site improvements with what we're doing, they've asked us to take a look at lowering. If you look at the, uh, the north, um, Cedar Johnson North, about where it ends. They want that to be about two feet lower to comply with or to coordinate with their grading on the road they plan to take into the development. That does, um, cause us a little bit more excavation, but at the same time, if we can take all the material that we have extra and put it on their property because they need it to fill. Uh, that gives us a disposal site, which should reduce the cost. So we don't have to haul it somewhere to get rid of it because we will have quite a bit of extra material. So those are things that we're coordinating, uh, we're also discussing the right of way and whether that has to be as far north or if we can like move it back a little bit and then have a utility easement. So that their setback is a little further south because it starts in the property line and not from the easement. So it would be beneficial for them to have that as the utility easement and now this right away to include utilities. Uh, where that, uh, impacts the city is that in the future, if we did improvements and in the private easement, we relocate utilities where it's just right of way. The utilities relocate the city to the project. So just working through those items and, uh, Wednesday, we're supposed to meet and discuss that. Already done some preliminary plans, but, uh, Chad was out and wanted to uh, talk with M and S a little bit more before they gave us a response, so I expect to hear something on Wednesday. And then, uh, meet with the county and try to get that all wrapped up so that we have the grading plans completed and we can finalize the easements on the north side. So, uh, the, uh, discussion was that if, uh, if we could get an easement put in place. Whether we go with right of way easement as part of the plat, we could do the easement in the next couple of weeks and get the utility started. And whenever they did the plat on that property, they would just dedicate that as part of that. So if it was gonna be right away, it would just, the easement would go away and we'd have, uh, right of way in that area, so. That's all being worked out in the next couple of weeks, we hope to have everything as far as, uh, right of way acquired and utilities started on relocations.
There, there's a lot of excavate even gonna happen with this. Where we have an idea where that dirt goes.
That's, that's what we're talking about, if we can put that on Meadows three A.
Oh, they would take all of it. For the whole project.
Work it into their grading plan, uh, that, that's being discussed in coordination with lowering that road a couple of feet, just to make their grading plan work better.
Future load, lowering that doesn't drive this any.
The hill goes down pretty quickly after that, it's just, they want that.
Where does that end? Where is that a lot? Were we considering their? Are we considering their excavation plan up there or future road stuff as well? I figured.
Dave went, um.
All of a sudden, oh, he's got a new top here and then three years from now, right?
Cedar Johnson gets, uh, rebuilt, would we want some dirt? Let's say fill that with valley is? Would we want some of the, of this dirt?
Where we'll put it.
We have a, uh, preliminary alignment for that that we can take a look at and see what the balance is on it. But I think there's an opportunity just, uh, going out, there's some pretty, pretty steep side slopes that we can borrow from to fill those in.
I need a yard down.
All clay.
Ow, then I don't need it. Sure, yard, yard of dirt will make this.
Okay. Thing else?
You said water main, uh, we are working on survey on that. And that'll be good. Out of a contract for it, but what we talked about was trying to get split up so that the first part, we could do anything that wasn't S R F eligible and make that as project and then do the second part apply for the S R F application. Um, the interesting part about S R F is they like you to stay within the right of way, they don't want you to go outside, and now we've got the, uh, lead service lines where they're encouraging you to go all the way to the house, so we need to figure out if we can, uh, work those S R F rules to accomplish both items, but there is also, there, there's, there's some funding, ironically, through S R F because they're given the, uh, the infrastructure bill money and there's a large part of that that is set aside for lead service line replacement. And, uh, yeah, that's interesting to see that S R F for so many years has said you can't go outside the property line and now they're telling you have to.
You're pretty certain that most of those out there.
So with, with the guidance they put out, they've indicated nineteen eighty eight is the year that if you're after nineteen eighty eight, uh, if you're newer than that, you can assume that that's, uh, lead free. Um, before nineteen eighty eight, you have to do the investigation to demonstrate that it's not lead.
Actually abandoned one eighty six. Everybody, I know it was nineteen eighty, but the price or the finest copper, I can see it. But I have to prove it with a magnet or whatever it is.
We cut out about a forty foot lead water line in Iowa City. I would have hated to run into the relays that made that stuff back.
The service lines, then?
Yeah.
It used to be a eighteen E, eighteen D, had a lead line that went cross country. Along the interstate, along the south interstate. It was a lead line that had the.
Communications cable?
Oh, yeah. Hold it a B line.
Final questions, anybody questions today?
Do we have a final number? Yeah.
Final number two.
Pause.
We won't have a final number until it's bid and built.
And then even then it might change.
In what, November, we're trying to get.
We, we should have a final estimate and, uh, before we put out the bid, so we should have quantities finalized then. Big part of this is if we can get rid of the dirt onsite, that reduces our haul cost significantly. So that's why we're working this easement discussion.
And I see we're not doing anything to the south. Little bit of blacktop. Yeah, gravel and blacktop. That should kind of cut some cost.
Keep in mind what we do on the north side, that's going to cut off, what we have to do as part of the Cedar Johnson extension later, so the we're going a little for the north and just roundabout, but that's to get to a good tight point and now we've got some discussion and coordinating that, um, potential intersection work with that developer as well, so.
I don't mind going north because we're gonna do it someday anyway.
And if we can get that so that that roadway is tied in with their road, when we go to shut that down in the future, it doesn't impact that at all, that's the, the proposal is to go back to the cul-de-sac in that area. So if we can get that hooked in now and get our road passed there, when we go to do Cedar Johnson in the future, we just ended there, they still have access and it doesn't corrupt. That's gonna be a mess if we don't do it now, so.
All right, thank you, Dave. City administrator report.
Now, just a reminder, end of the month, I will be in Waterloo, so will the mayor for Iowa League of Cities. Our next council meeting, I will be here probably on time or a couple minutes late, I will be in Cedar Rapids for what is called um, Corridor or Area Leaders Live, so this is a big group in Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, where they talk about city issues. Uh, so I'll be myself and mayor of Cedar Rapids and Marion North Liberty and there'll be another administrator there.
On a Monday night, they must all have the meetings on Tuesday.
Uh, but I should be here right around on time.
Kevin, anything?
Uh, filed petition on two oh three East Green Street.
Petition does what?
Play to the abandoned house and the house and the fort to give the city titles of the property. Nothing.
Dave, Kurt and Dave, city engineer, city staff, anyone? All right. Comments, mayor and council, I don't have anything. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn. Nick will second, I'll hold the papers, say aye.
Aye.